Caucus room, agenda has been given out to everybody that needed it. It's all yours, sir.
All right, so I was trying to improve myself and I forgot to do this. I should have circled one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Because of the jumbling of the pages here, but hopefully nobody changed them around from the order they were printed. So we'll start with the police department. Bottom of the page says page six. Yellow highlighted have been on there. Just the planned capital program. So nothing, just bumped up nine by one system to twenty grand a year, starting in twenty twenty six. MDTs. Bumped it up later in twenty twenty eight. But body cams. We're getting body cams, we have a grant, right, chief?
Correct, and we just applied for this week, finished up the grant for the third year, so we should find out.
Okay, and then we're just putting money away for future replacement.
Right.
Dash cams are on schedule for next year. Computer aided dispatch is what I'd like to chief to kind of talk about, because we're not exactly sure if it's going to happen next year or if we're gonna go with what we currently have.
So, and we talked about adding the money for twenty seven as well. There's a lot of different platforms out there, we've looked at most of them. We're waiting for the Axon platform, we have Axon body cams, we're removing to Axon in car. The Axon CAD. It's it's a working beta, I guess, there are some departments that have it, the way it's explained, it's exactly looking what we're looking for and it'll integrate everything we have together. Their deadline has come and gone when they would be able to start arguing that to departments. So we started looking at others, really haven't found something that works better for us than what we have now. We're being told that potentially in twenty six, the Axon thing will launch and we're gonna be looking at that, but I can't guarantee it will be in twenty twenty six. So more than likely that's gonna be pushed to twenty twenty seven.
So could we be, if if it doesn't come to fruition in twenty twenty six, would we be putting cash, putting that hundred thousand in twenty twenty six and flipping the lease?
We could do that, yeah.
You know what I'm saying? Put put aside what money we were gonna, you know, just to have some money for that, because it's.
Kind of a down payment on a lease to buy.
It's gotta, it's gotta happen, right, chief?
Oh, absolutely.
And it's no matter who we get it from, when we do it, a year from now, two years from now, it has to happen and it's gonna be in this price range.
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah, so we'll keep an eye on that. Again, as many of you had heard and have heard me say over the years, this is a working document. I probably have fifteen versions of it already this year. So we'll keep an eye on that, it is a big ticket item too, so. SRO cars, we actually, I think since I printed this out, have a potential purchase of a vehicle. And then the twenty two thousand kind of to upgrade it and maybe wrap it if we want to.
So this was already on the capital plan to add another car to the fleet next year in twenty twenty six. Lieutenant Costello started looking, and this goes to what's gonna be on the agenda for twenty twenty as well, but started looking for the vehicle. He found one now with rebates and they have a trade in deal. Long story short, it's gonna save us twenty grand. We pay forty eight for that vehicle normally, we found one that we can get for twenty eight thousand. So we were gonna buy that thing this year, the rest of the money for the upfitting, we could wait a year to outfit it. We'll get the twenty twenty six and the plan capital, outfit it next year, it'll be a regular looking police car like the SRO car, we wrap the same, except it's gonna be led you instead of a full size knight, it's gonna be kind of a mini knight, you know, like a.
Elementary.
Elementary school kid. So, and we're.
We were squires, we were led you squires back in the day.
There you go, I do remember that.
Yeah, so we could be squires.
We'll have to look into that to see if what they call themselves over there, so we will. But currently that SRO is driving a marked police car, the idea of that car is getting a lot more used than it needs to be and we need to move some cars around the fleet. Don't know if this specific car will be the SRO car, but it's providing a car for the SRO when we move all the stuff around. The car that it's replacing, when I was in the vehicle crash where ended, I went to get that car going and it ain't going. We finally got it going now and it's, you know, it's a two thousand seventeen, winters in Ohio don't do well with police cars, so.
That's the old Ford.
It's a Ford.
Fusion.
Ford Fusion, yes, yes, that's why it didn't start the mayor in Florence.
Nothing to do with looking through.
That was the.
All right, so that's the general police department budget for twenty twenty six there on the bottom of the page. Some of the specialty funds that we have, don't have a lot of money coming into those funds because maybe lack of personnel to be involved in special task forces.
Some of those are rare, yeah, some of those are, they don't come around every day.
Right, right. So actually reduce that number a little bit, because as we start eating into the fund balance for those small little funds and it's not being replenished as often. That's why there's a small amount of training to pay out of there. And then the next page.
Was it always the plan to do these two six hundred thousand leases in twenty twenty seven? Did we get, did we put layout that much in twenty twenty two?
Well, and we talked about that today at staff meeting, because COVID kinda.
I remember that we did a lot of cars at once, but is it gonna be possible to spread them out? Or is this like the starting point?
No, we're gonna try.
Okay, and start to.
Yeah, we might move.
That subject's been brought up many times.
Well, that's, it was one point two the last time we bought cars, because of the delay, we ended up buying, usually in years past, we've replaced them slowly, so you know, it's not a huge thing, the biggest thing for us now is the waiting on the turnover to outfit those cars, there's still a three month late, and anybody in Ohio that'll do them. So there's a lot of downtime waiting on that, so ideally, because we had to purchase because of the delays, we did them all at one time, it's gonna put us off, but we'll get back to a cycle again.
Okay.
Yeah, we might move one of the six hundreds to early twenty twenty eight, just to start trying to ladder again.
Okay, yeah, good point.
Good, good point.
I assume that you guys talked about it, so let everyone else know.
I'm glad you brought it up. And then the next page is basically any upgrades to the city hall police station facility. And the flock cameras are on here, we have pole cam and cameras. Same company?
It is.
Yeah. So those are repetitive that we've been able to do, put some money aside, like we did for, you know, here. Get some money put aside for upgrades to to this room, same thing that we do in the police department.
How far behind are you, chief, on the cell block? Is it up to standard or up to what you?
Well, we we're meeting our standards for the Ohio jail standards, but there's there's some. I mean, when a toilet costs, depends on which distributor you get it from, but thirty five hundred to six grand. And I'd like to slowly run and start replacing toilets at least three a year, so that's gonna eat up quite a bit of money. There's some other minor issues, ultimately, we wanna see some of that money grow, because the entire plumbing system back there, there's some, I don't wanna call it new technology, I don't know, but the the design was pretty, it's not very good. And we've had bummer come out in the past, they're like, you guys really need to consider replacing this whole thing. The way that's set up is two cells are joined together to one stack to empty, so preserve one cell, clogs their toilet, causes the backup, it backs up water into the other cell by design, there's no way around that until we replace it, and that's what I intend to do.
Okay. Onto fire department, next page is listed as page four. Twenty twenty six will be kind of a, let's take a break here. As we see the purple for twenty twenty seven, twenty eight, twenty nine. Rescue squad and fire engine and air packs. Biggest item, station audio. As the chief's getting older, it's harder to hear him. I don't know what station it might be.
Overhead.
Yeah, it's all it's all the speakers currently down around training, radio, radio communications, because that system melted down actually a couple of years ago. It seems like we went to the digital audio with eight hundred radio system, it's almost impossible to understand throughout any apparatus base. Kyle, the tech guru that he is assures me that there's technology out there that's going to work in that space. So we're gonna do all that and make it work throughout the entire building. And also, just so you guys know, we have two squads on order, one for Sagamow, one for here. Initially, they were supposed to be here the end of this year, then they got pushed beginning of next year and we just got a phone call and I can't tell you which ones which, one is scheduled for December of next year and one is the first quarter of twenty seven.
Yeah, so we have this one slated for twenty seven.
Fire suppression, that's for this building, right?
Correct.
The wet, yeah.
For the whole, the whole building? Is that something we just got replaced or fixed or?
We did the dry system. And we don't know that we're gonna need to have this expensive, we wanted to plan for it, I mean, they're plated with water in them, they're steel for twenty shoot, thirty years, it definitely. You don't wanna be around when we drain those, because it's not plus.
And then the next page is this building, the fire station portion of it. We did a lot recently with the bay upgrades and the air handling system in there. We have a lot of encumbered funds for upstairs.
Yeah, renovations upstairs and waiting for it.
So that's, that's why this is really just carpeting and general upgrades, because everything else is pretty much encumbered and we're waiting to make the move. Service department, page eight, as it's indicated. A light year, we're actually buying stuff, we're gonna be setting aside money for two single axles in twenty six and then purchasing them in early twenty seven. One more leaf vac to round out our.
Yeah.
Leaf vacs and two boxes and we should have how many total?
Four. Four machines. Two box.
Increase production time and be able to switch out real quick. Okay. Next page is manor house. Service department, so manor house, the two, the two dollar amount set aside, we talked about. Hopefully as a council member, finally, it might not be that much for two hundred fifty thousand replacements that you grow. But always better to set aside more money than than less, so that's the plan for twenty twenty six. Service center complex, we all know that's coming sometime in twenty twenty six.
Right there. It'll break ground this year.
Highly doubtful, but.
Jeez.
The good news is we're setting aside money, we've encumbered money for cash down payment. And we will set aside more money in twenty seven, because let's say the construction takes nine, ten months, you know, the retainer, the the final, after your checklist of open items, we can make that last payment with cash in twenty twenty seven. We'll have enough money for the shuttles for the ground breaking. Yeah, I think so, yeah, we have enough encumbered for those unless they're gold plated. Okay.
What do you anticipate, are you ready, cost is gonna be on this loan?
Well, um, depends on.
Yeah, the rates change, what would they be if we had this long today?
Actually.
Is it fifty year loan?
Uh, no, no, no.
Of expected life, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
Like, wow, cool.
Twenty years. I did spread it out, I was playing with the numbers. So if you look, it'll be in debt when we talk about. Monument signs, continuous. Improvements throughout the city with those.
How many, how many more monument signs do you have?
Sugar Bush will get done, I think, this year.
Right.
Yeah.
We still have to do, we have to replace the one at the rec center, because we have the screens for that one.
And then the intersection of the four corners, the four corners.
We held that one.
Northfield and Valley View by Pittsburgh Church.
Yeah, that's it, and the level mall.
Yeah. And it'll go through twenty seven? We might not need twenty seven, depending on timing, we might not need that hundred thousand or something.
Yeah, that's all of them, and John, to your point, since we may not need twenty seven.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can pull it back.
They allocate it towards that service center payment.
Sounds good.
So onto city hall. Building, engineering, IT departments, not a lot here, set money aside for copier, physical servers. Increase that, we talked to Kyle, and we're bumping up those annual amounts. Next page, it's indicated at page five. IT solutions, that's all of our maintenance contracts and software support. Nothing special there. That'll include a new building software, right, Kyle?
They're already in the process of migrating to the.
Right, right, but payments of the twenty six, yeah. Is that all the departments then? Everybody upgraded, I was thinking service for some reason.
Service has a GIS based.
Okay.
The question of, you know, is we're happy with what they have, you know, those, not, you're you're constantly looking at upgrades.
Right, but not, not a complete.
Not a complete rebuild, no.
Okay. All right, onto the next page, and that would be family rec center, well, one little city hall. General upgrades, we set money aside, heat pumps. Back on wood, we've replaced a lot of them here.
But not all of them.
But not all of them.
And they fail constantly.
It's a hot topic.
It's a hot topic, or a cold topic. So we just put money there, hopefully we don't have to use that every year, but as we have replaced a lot of them since I've been here.
We're also in the process of having a energy audit in the buildings, actually here in the rec center, to determine the efficiency of what we have, what they recommend, what we can do better, what we could do replace, so that's gonna be happening, I think, by the end of the year, right?
Yeah, Dan, there's, we sent out a request for three RFPs and two were replied, and we're in the process of selecting some.
And we're extremely confident that the windows are gonna need replaced, it's not on here yet, because we don't really have an idea yet. But in light of a lot of things going on in society now, we're talking about bulletproof windows in certain areas, because it may make sense. But the the windows that are in the building are now gonna be thirty years old, so we're kind of approaching the useful life, I know they're pretty drafty. I think Mrs. Smith's office is pretty bad, they're all bad, I mean, they're they're drafty, they're they're beyond.
They're cold in the winter, I feel it.
Yeah. Kind of there, we've lived along that point.
So the big idea for twenty twenty six is parking lot resurface. Along with that'll come decorative lighting from the parking lot to eighty two.
And we're gonna have lights to the road, because it's very dark back there.
Onto family rec center. Page three of the family rec center, exercise equipment, it's an annual amount. If we don't use it, we, or we use some of it, we keep it encumbered and, you know, might buy four or five electricals or whatever. But it's good to have money to set aside to replace. A Kubota is something that we talked about now that the the trail's gonna be there and need to run back and forth around, around the park.
Yeah.
Then copiers and scanner, fax machines, you know, the des hubs.
Quick, quick.
Yeah.
With these new trails and everything else in effect, if you you have this other equipment to get out to them, is there gonna be communications? Do we, you have a communication set up already for your people?
In terms of?
Okay, somebody needs help out there and you may need to, you know, once somebody goes out.
Phones.
Yes.
What was talked about, I I bet.
But how about from one, one employee to another, somebody gets out there, somebody's still standing by it?
We have a lock.
Yeah, we have, we have, we have radios.
We do have radios.
Yes, we do have radios, we actually just got upgraded.
Okay.
Or five super radios.
Okay, that's what I.
Yeah, and we use those for events too.
My question for these, are, these are, these vehicles are for the rec center, right, not for the service?
Correct.
Correct. So how are you storing them and keeping them secure? Or is it flames for like a shed or something?
Yeah, so if if we, if if this utility vehicle gets purchased, we would need to look at a larger storage area, currently the four seater, or the the golf cart, parking under one of the alcoves, that gets stored in barn somewhere. I believe in, with with additional, we have, we have some options there. Yeah, these would be.
Yeah.
Park.
Yeah, it would probably be easy to get something set up, it's storage and security. So you might wanna add a cost for that, I don't know, I don't know how much of a cost.
To get to the next page.
Okay.
Forward thinking, Jessica.
So next page, continuation of parks and rec. The ball field, that's just a maintenance that a third party does every year. The ball field, lighting A and B, or I'm sorry, A and D, that would complete the lighting of all four fields. So we're in the process of checking out the electric, make sure there's enough power to those and and Pete has a few contacts already with Musco.
Yeah, I was already about to evaluate. When, when we get a, like a grant or a donation for something, do we, is that subtracted out of this already, or do we assume?
No.
You're not getting it, you get it.
No, we get it, so maybe about thirty thousand comes in from OPEC a year, and we use it towards. So we have to pay for the full amount and the grant comes in on the revenue side.
Okay.
Yeah, but good point.
So that would up the revenue for the expected revenue?
Yeah.
They're gonna up the actual revenue, so if you don't think you're gonna get the grants, say your revenue is two million dollars.
Pretty annual, the OPEC grants, yes.
Where you don't expect, you don't write it in, and then you you change it, so it changes the actual revenue.
Okay.
The no, the OPEC grants, correct me if I'm wrong, have to be used for energy system.
Right.
To supplement energy.
Right.
Roger.
And the fact that the lights would be high efficiency.
We have a really good contact in OPEC, so it helps.
Really good?
If if we spent this hundred thousand twenty five on lights, and then we got a thirty thousand dollar grant from OPEC, does that mean our actual expense was seventy, or did you spend one thirty?
No, that means our net was seventy.
Got it.
Yeah.
What about if it's a donation, like the the flock cameras, like how does that play into?
Same thing, I have to, I have to pay the full amount and then show the revenue.
Okay.
Yeah. The only time it would net is like we're trading in a vehicle.
Okay.
Which is on the agenda tonight.
Got it.
And then twenty twenty six at the bottom, field house, or, you know, the mayor, we're thinking about. You know, let's just set aside some money annually for a cash down payment, you see the word levy there, which, you know, I've told Jason and and Pete, the only way we could afford a field house without two new large companies moving in would be a portion of it be paid by a levy. I don't know if you wanna add anything.
So this conversation, Jessica, you could probably speak this to, this conversation's taken place forever. There's supposed to be phase two and three, two was supposed to be the pool, three was the field house. I don't think that there's much of an appetite for a pool anymore, although I hear it all the time, but we do live in Ohio, and I have an above ground pool in my yard, I could tell you, it's a lot of work and I closed it the other day and it's not fun. But I think we start to look towards socking away some money for it to have the conversation later on down the road. I mean, this kind, this comes up constantly, I know you guys see it on social media, but I I hear it all the time from people, we need a field house, we need basketball courts, volleyball, pickleball, indoor, all that stuff. So I think, my thinking is we start to put some money aside for that. I don't, I wanna be very clear, because I don't want the new sources out there that use AI to pick this up, we're not going for a levy, that's not what we're saying. I think at some point we have this conversation down the road, but that would flow through the Parks and Rec Commission, to council, to here, I mean, we, there's a lot of conversations that have to take place. I'm asking now to start to put money aside to think about that, because it's something we need, I mean, we have a great facility over there and this is the next big step for us.
And then covering the money, though, that may be spent again, so.
It could be pulled back.
Yeah. Or used for another purpose down the road.
Why do you have the little highlight for Sugar Bush in the playground, is there something supposed to be there?
We're talking about regrading the soccer field.
Scribble it in after we've opened it.
Well, it's twenty seven in the future, so it won't affect.
I I just wondered if there was just to say something.
Yeah, we.
You have to get a dime and scratch it off.
Scratch it off.
See if you're a winner.
Run a crayon over it.
I'll also add to that, the pavilions, we're having conversations about, they need some help, so it's probably coming up here, but I wanna put it out there now, the players are in need of of something. They've seen better days and you always work to your strengths, and I can tell you that those things are running out every weekend.
We did add it at our last meeting, a line item for pavilions, based upon what you had seen in that great city, independence.
Where is the line?
Okay, it's. It's it's in my computer.
We don't know yet, it's kind of a, we're in process.
But we do have a line item for it, I think I might throw, I think it was fifty thousand a year, starting in twenty six.
Are we just thinking, keeping the same footprint?
No, they're, the same, yeah, but the the wood's rotten, I mean, they're, we're kind of at a point.
I'm saying, like, are we just gonna add four more, or just keeping the same three that we have, okay. You're just fixing them up, or, yeah, for rebuilding on the pad.
Something that's a little more withstanding to the weather in Ohio.
Have to stop calling places. Can't wait to get back from next week, if they add more line items. But items, I'm sure that we've already talked about. Family rec center and the next page, page nine, if you will. General upgrades to the building, building renovations. Pool pumps, again, highlighted, because, you know, Pete's new and we're trying to get a handle of age, condition, total pumps that we have. need to replace. So that's why that's there. Remodeling, we have a remodeling line every year. We're lucky enough to be able to set money aside for our items that need, and I'm sure, Jessica, you know, are always talking about.
Where are, where are we at now? But, you know, we've remodeled the fitness areas, we've remodeled the locker rooms. We're doing the offices. What are, does anyone have any plans going forward remodeling?
Still have the family.
The family catering room's being done like right now. So that's a twenty twenty five, and so.
That space is very awkward, as we all know, and we've always talked about rethinking that and reimagining what that would look like. There's always been the talk about extending that bridge to where we have that second floor completely, which is also part of it. That's kind of what the thinking is behind that.
Okay.
So we can, those, those big poles that you see in there are actual supporting poles, from what I understand now. That needs to be verified at some point, but that may be the next step. I guess it's a little more than a remodel, it's more of a upgrade.
Sure.
Yeah, and again.
Sometimes there's two. It's fairly weathered.
Yeah. Okay.
And, and again, the fact that we're encumbering it, we're gonna accumulate it for a larger project.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so it's good to be able to set money aside to be able to do that. General upgrades. You mentioned something that I said until the next speech.
A shed or something for the park vehicles?
Yeah, yeah, so the wrestling complex improvements, general upgrade line could be a, you know, portion of that sixty five thousand could be a shed for storage.
So we're very excited. I'm very excited to see that you have the netting for the ball fields.
Oh.
I can't believe the prices.
I was gonna say, netting's that much.
The netting, the netting, every time that we've talked about netting, it's like way more expensive than, than you think it is.
Special note, though, the four hundred and fifty, all encumbered already.
So it's all ready to go?
Yeah, I already have the encumbrance, the POs ready to go.
That's awesome. We've been, we've been talking about that in Parks and Rec Commission for five years.
Yeah, so is this to catch foul balls?
Yeah, so when you're in the baseball quad, if you're sitting over here watching your kid on a field over here.
Yep.
You, you are very.
Susceptible.
Susceptible to getting a foul ball from the one right behind you and it is a real problem.
Yes, it is.
So it is, it is awesome that we're finally getting that. Stacy Suji is a baseball mom and she's been on Parks and Rec Commission for a long time and she's advocated for that, so I'm glad to be.
Is this, is that four fifty for all four? It's to do all the baseline ten, first and third.
And just so everyone knows, you know, we put a lot of money into our ball fields, but a lot of the planning is to, it doesn't pay for itself one to one, but it does bring in revenue. Our ball fields, we can rent them out for tournaments and the more amenities we have, like these nets to keep everyone safe and the more lights we can bring in some revenue from that.
Yes. And that's probably another reason why they, expansion of the fields is just in yellow, you know, yellow, no numbers because when Jason was there, he was talking about adding fields.
Yeah, we're still talking about.
Yeah, we feel if you add lighting and use what we have, you know, more efficiently and longer, you know.
Yeah, you just got a new set of eyes on it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And then bathrooms. I think the mayor will have his eyes on some of those potential options when he goes to the conference.
Yeah, that is very needed, so definitely help us promote a solution for bathroom at Sugar Bush. Then we can also consider putting, using the same solution that the North Soccer Field.
Soccer Field, yeah.
Do we have utilities near enough at Sugar Bush where it's not going?
There's other options, which is what I'm exploring. I don't remember the name of the company, but it actually seemed like it would work very well, but I wanna explore it a little more. I wanna go see it and imagine, based on the one where it's, you don't need connections to it. You can, someone could utilize the restroom. You can stick your head inside of it and you will not smell a thing, which I find hard to believe, but I'm gonna look more into that.
Take pictures when you did.
It's not like a honey dipper kind of thing where they gotta, you know, come in and do all that. It's like once a year and it's some type of chemical that breaks down feces and urine and all that, so we'll see.
All right, on to streets. Top of the page is our road program. In twenty twenty six, we'll have Shepherd Road, Twinsburg is gonna pay twenty percent. And it'll be from Route eighty two to four eighty. That's really the only other project on this page. Next page is design engineering for State Route eight and Highland Intersection. There's a new requirement, federal requirement?
For projects with federal grant funds.
Yeah, we're, we actually have to hire a third party to look to hire these design engineers. We can't just use our city engineer. So the project might get pushed back half a year to a year because of that new requirement.
So we've already borrowed money towards this project?
Yeah.
This year? And what have we, we've, we do, have we done the design and engineering?
No, we've, we borrowed it prior to knowing that the, I think the rules changed after we borrowed it.
Correct.
Yeah, so did you spend some of it on engineering already?
No.
Okay.
No, we put a halt down.
Okay.
So, and then the last page, page thirteen is our storm sewer. Good news about this page, I have to play all of those hundred percent very personal.
Yes.
Except for the general maintenance at the top.
What's, what's the Iroquois Phase Two?
Yeah, so we did a project on Iroquois a couple of years ago with drainage improvements. Still at the low end of Iroquois, the most westerly end, we have some woefully undersized storm sewers. Along there, we get a heavy rain and we have flooding, front yards are flooded, all that.
Gotcha. We get a lot of complaints. I should say, they start with complaints. We get a lot of complaints.
And the bottom line is our, we've created the GIS infrastructure. Maybe I should change that title because we started that a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
And the annual cost to keep that moving. I think you just had a service department, personnel.
Yeah, we just did all the streetlights.
Yeah.
Seeing it here was a huge help back. We now have all those streetlights put up in GIS.
Which is gonna be part of our energy out in as well, so.
So that means they'll self-report from their house or?
Not necessarily, but it makes it a lot easier for us. Like, we can just pull up, see the whole city. Right now, I know there's sixty one out, but I can just look at all of them. I can see where they are. I can hand the iPad or whatever to the guy who's gonna go fix them. Just go to each one, fix them, update it on the spot. You know, they're immediately updated as he goes. Just makes everything much more convenient.
Type of balls and everything too, right?
Fixer.
Yeah, and then we, we have all the data, you know, it's LED. We know what's not an LED. We can update them on, on. So we're still replacing the fixture itself in the evening? Yeah.
Yeah, we have a citywide program, though.
Yeah, you guys need to get everything out.
It's on that prior page, the last, space lighting, LED upgrade. So that's that. And then on to the debt. Twenty twenty six. You'll see I drew a line kind of in my mind.
No debt in this year?
Yeah, no debt. This debt is carrying over to this debt now. So next year will be our, or actually, this year was our last, will be our last payment in December on the eight hundred megahertz radios. So throwing that hundred and twenty in principle towards our borrowing that we did for Highland Valley View, Fledge and State Route eight Highland. And then you asked about the service center complex. Three hundred and seventy five in estimated principal. Again, it's a band, so we wanna keep our borrowing in short term until the rates drop a little bit. Estimated interest on that, so. And as I carried that out for the full twenty years, I looked at the expiration dates of the above bonds. North Freeway Drive, which is special settlement, so that, that's different. Aerial Tower that ends in twenty twenty eight, annual debt service. Then I bring that down to help pay for the service center complex. Same thing with the seventy percent on the Shepherd South Freeway Drive improvements. A much larger, well, two hundred and fifty seven a year that we can then redirect towards the service center complex that. OPWC interest free. I'm not sure why. I have the number signs. It probably wasn't white enough to print. But it's, it's thirty seven, three twenty one. Because there are, there is no interest. I have the debt service at thirty seven, three twenty one. The next page is just all of our leases. And we try and schedule that out to end when, you'll see the police office vehicles, police department vehicles. They end in twenty seven, so if we get some new vehicles in twenty seven, the first payment will be till twenty eight. So that's how we try and do that.
As we work it, when we decide to keep a vehicle for longer than the lease?
Yes, it's called lease, but it's a capital lease.
Yeah, okay. So we own, so they're ours.
Yeah.
So we have some equity in on that, so it's not so bad.
Yeah, and when we trade in, I think we'll have higher trade in value on these vehicles that we recently bought. Yeah, I mean, better than our age through the COVID, we had to, at the time.
You're saying you'll extend it?
Yeah, yeah, so. That's the debt.
Do we ever look at revenue on the other end, like as we're going through the stuff?
Yeah, that'll be.
We just assume he has enough money.
That's my first, my first goal for the next meeting.
Gotcha.
All right. Oh, one of these.
Yeah, can I have it back?
I gave it up.
And then do we ever, like, I don't know how it works for city government, do we ever like refinance on debt?
We, we have, we have a finance, financial advisor. And actually, when I started, we refinanced debt, I think the first year I was here. But the way the market is now. Not a good time.
Right, right. I just mean in general.
No, we definitely, we keep our eye on it every year. Yeah.
I think I've voted on one or two.
Yeah.
Um, so a lot of these capital expenditures, they go up, but they're not static. How are we planning around tariffs? I saw that in the, the one vehicle that we're getting today, there's a eight thousand dollar maybe, might be higher charge for tariffs. How are we planning for those? I know, now with, as a.
Thousand dollars?
Yeah.
The police vehicles? Oh, the loader?
Yeah, the loader.
Okay.
Um, I know that we have to, as, as a government, we have to buy a lot of stuff or the fire department has to buy American made stuff. Are there stipulations on that stuff?
No.
No? So, so stuff we get.
We have a lot of turn up here from China.
And the waste made, yeah.
Can't find anything big enough.
Or your bulletproof vest from China either.
We had that for horse stuff.
But how, are you planning, do you have that kind of stuff in mind when you were writing capital letters?
We have, yeah, we look at the cost.
I mean, I know they go up.
Yeah.
You know, and, but it's just, we're not gonna, you know, H bag and human vehicle.
Luckily, we just replaced the Family Rec Center.
Yeah, true, true. Yeah, we didn't kind of get in under the gun, but.
And it was the COVID one, so.
So I mean, some stuff could go up, you know.
Yeah.
Probably, probably everything's gonna go up about ten percent, although it kind of already has. It can go up to as much as fifty percent depending on the components.
Hopefully, the other side of the tariff is more jobs in Macedonia.
Buy all of our stuff local, buy all of our turn up gear local.
Manufacturing job will increase.
All right. That's, that's the plan, huh?
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions from Mr. Garaus? Can we put this to sleep for today?
Yeah, and then two weeks from it, we'll have operating budget.
On September twenty fifth, we'll be back in a half hour before the work session.
That's good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody need a break or we wanna roll right into work session? All right. There's a couple of ordinances on here that I think are gonna have a little bit more lengthy discussion. So as I go through them, I'm gonna suggest we move to the end, go through the stuff that isn't as complicated to discuss. If you object, tell me and we'll just keep talking about it. But I think the first one is forty twenty twenty five. Can you move that down, Councilman?
Yes, please.
All right. Fifty one is the new residential driveways and parking areas. I think, I think planning wants to talk about this one and do it.
We should probably hold this to second reading. I'll make it easier. If you guys haven't met our new assistant, Billy Quister, Mr. Allen is here today. Anything you wanna add to that?
Well, basically, the planning commission just wants to have more time to discuss it.
Okay, we'll hold it at second. Fifty three. I'm forgetting which one this is.
Oh, this is a tip.
This is the tip. Do you wanna talk about this now?
Second reading. First reading and then I required to notify both school districts. The treasurer from the schools picked up the notification and I delivered the CBCC notification. And haven't heard anything back from either one because we're keeping them both full, so. Second reading and then we'll look for passage.
Okay, anyone have questions on tips? These are kind of boilerplate for us.
This'll probably be our largest one from a collection standpoint anyways. And we just found out today from Todd, Assistant Building Commissioner, that the holiday excess program. So that'll be another tip on the agenda for first read. If I could get it together.
Is that how that works? You can't do it until they break down?
Well, you don't wanna, tips are based on thirty year selection. So you wanna pass the tip in the year that they're, they're groundbreaking.
Got it.
Is that the, where is that one located?
Next one.
That hotel's been talked about for quite a while, longer than I care about it.
So that's that. Second reading, please.
Okay. Fifty five is the RV ordinance. I'm gonna push that one off to the end. Fifty six is the solicitor's ordinance. We push that one off to the end.
We're gonna leave that at first reading. There'll be some hiccups there. And we'll deal with the rest of them before we get to discount that.
Well, there's a bit of brugge. You guys haven't been brugge since.
Not yet.
We won't even say anything. Okay.
I left you a message.
I, I did. I was gonna call you back, but you said you were busy, so I thought I won't bother. I'll see you today, so.
Was putting a refrigerator back together and bringing a lot of food back into the house.
Uh, do you wanna talk to a person?
Sure. This is exactly what the chief was talking about earlier with the second SRO vehicle. Obviously, Lieutenant Costello found a really good deal and saving twenty thousand dollars, I think, is enticing for all of us to want that. So if we can do that now, that's a good savings and I think we ought to do that.
Anyone object to three reads? One, two, three?
No.
I don't know. Fifty eight.
This is anti-poaching through the county. They're increasing it, I believe, to three point five or four point five million, essentially saying. Essentially saying, if Twisberg has a business, I can't go over there and poach that business, if I do do that, then I have to pay them some type of penalty back. That's the most simplistic way to put it out there, am I missing anything on that?
Well, the OPWC tie-in too.
Well, it also ties into OPWC dollars that goes into our scoring, and those points, if we don't get those, could mean we don't get it. So we kind of got pigeonholed into it, no matter what. And talking with Mr. Gilati, we really need those points, those, those dollars are a big deal for us.
Yeah, the OPWC credit was the carrot to get the communities to join, to begin with. Everybody did, this is just a proposed amendment to the agreement to. The main thing, in my understanding, is that increases the triggering threshold from three point five million to four point five million.
Pay reflected inflation, things like that.
I don't see that being an issue.
I, I got the skinny form. Two days ago, so.
Pretty innocuous in the rest.
Yes, okay. What do you want to do on this? Free reading?
Yeah, they're looking for us to send it back to.
Okay, so, okay, that was actually how I should have asked.
Yeah, I think it's actually due October first.
Okay. Uh, fifty-nine.
This is housekeeping certification of the tax rates, simplistic thing we do every year, nothing crazy.
Anyone object to doing this, one, two, three?
I don't know, this also needs to go back to.
Has to go, oh, okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, sixty.
This is Director Wilson. Uh, super son of a new case loader, or download and use the word soul. The, you know, also used for other, I don't know, but the old loader is ten years old, this thing's lived, it's soul. So yeah, definitely the story shows age, cost much money, uh, ten years, uh, last stand, so. Money was set aside for capital. It's also purchased through Source Low, um, called the purchasing programs.
I take it we want this before this winter?
That'd be fantastic, so, I don't know. Like to do.
Any advantage we can get to getting it would be good.
Uh, I'd like to do this, one, two, three.
Sounds good.
Are these types of things, who does co-op programs? I'm assuming we don't do, like.
Bit.
Yeah, it's the state management, it's like.
Yeah, okay.
The bidding's already done, for the.
Yeah. Sixty-one.
This is Director Wilson again.
This is, John mentioned it earlier, this file leaf machine, to round out our four leaf machines, just like the other ones. With two boxes, just like the other ones. Type of pro plus, also purchased through a different co-op program, but same idea. Cut and dry. It's time to replace those, all those leaf machines are really old, so just get rid of our full file.
Okay, anyone object to one, two, three on sixty?
Would this be something we could get this year?
Um, probably not, probably not.
But the sooner the better, yeah.
Uh, sixty-two.
So be Mr. July.
Mr. July.
Oh, yes, so this is the replacement of an old rusted storm sewer that is in the tree lawn in front of the Aldi grocery store. Uh, after reviewing all the bids and the references for the various bidders, we've identified Grade Line Construction is the lowest and best bid, so we're recommending award to Grade Line this evening. We would ask for a one, two, three, as we often do on these types of projects, so we can give the contractor a go-ahead to get started. And projects paid for entirely with any RSD funds.
Anyone have any questions?
Is this going to tear up the road at all, or is this all?
No, this is. All right, we'll do that, one, two, three. Uh, sixty-three. This is you, Mr. Garris.
What amendment number is that?
Be number one, Mr. Garris.
Number one, thank you. So, uh, there's a memo attached and blue highlights for items that are supposed to be changed. Happy to increase the estimate for our income tax. Our income tax is up this year. About seven, fluctuating seven to nine percent up, so that's good. Permissive license tax, uh, now that the contract is finalized and the dollar amount, uh, two hundred twenty-five thousand was needed. Again, that comes from the county, so no cost to us, but we have to appropriate the money coming in, as grants, basically, and, and pay for the project. Ledro, right? Ledro fees too. I don't know if anybody has items after they, specific items after they write the, the memo. I've had some, I call it finance one-on-one with new members, so if you want to come, stop at the office. I think Benny did it, uh.
I think I can.
Yeah, you can. Because this is self-created, so it'll help you understand.
Yeah.
The flow of stuff, so we can set something up.
Okay. Anyone have any questions on sixty-three?
So all of your, I mean, all the changes, the amendments, is just adding revenue?
No, I added some, uh, the bottom part, yeah.
Changing where?
Right.
You're taking, adding more money because of the revenue, or moving some money around because of the revenue.
Right, or, you know, additional hires, police department, fire department. Grant money, and like you said, grant money came in for body cameras, so I had to increase the revenue and increase the expense.
Do we ever move anything towards the following year, when we get that, or typically keep it within? Wait a minute. Do we ever, do we ever move anything, like when we getting an increase in revenue in the current year, do we ever move, like, set anything aside for?
We do, we do through the planned capital purchase program.
Okay.
Which is a program I brought to Macedonia from, I used it in Independence, when I first started in Independence. You're not allowed to keep an open vendor PO past the end of the year, and it made no sense to me. So back in two thousand, two thousand one, I talked to the auditors and said, hey, this is what I want to do, how can I do this? Set money aside for a planned capital purchase, two hundred thousand a year for an eight hundred thousand dollar ambulance, you know, at the time, or a fire engine back then. So in order to do that, you have to go to council, create the program, and then annually, uh, update them with a planned capital, which we typically do in December. I'll show you spreadsheet with all the open POs, uh, so we're able to set aside open vendor POs and then pay for. Because you don't know who you're going to buy the fire engine from four years down the road, sorry.
Yep.
Yeah, so that's how we kind of move the money to the next year.
Yeah. Does everybody think about one, two, three?
Yeah, that would be appreciated.
We're just changing allocations.
Yeah.
Um, sixty-four, this is, um.
RVs and boats.
Well, it's actually, um, this is a new one, right? This is related to the parking.
Or should not. Yeah, and I wasn't here when you guys discussed the initial one.
We did, we moved it.
So you're going to.
We're, so we're going to discuss it, but not in order.
Yeah, we haven't discussed the RV ordinance, because we figured we'd move the more complicated stuff.
Yeah, so you can either skip this or get the first reading.
Right.
But you wouldn't connect, at, vote on this even, vote on passing this unless.
Unless we pass the other one, so, which I don't envision, I'm going to suggest we hold that, but for, just keep me accurate when I say this. This is recommendation from, um.
Your building commissioner.
The building commissioner with respect to making modifications to a different ordinance in the city related to parking.
That references it, right?
That, that it would, would be in conflict if we pass the RV ordinance and then didn't do this, is that an accurate way of saying it?
All this does is incorporate the other amendment that you.
Into the parking, yeah, so it's kind of like a, a carry-on, but we, we can, we can hold that, um, until we talk about the other one. I think, I think, you said we can read this at first read?
We can give it a first reading.
Okay, let's do that.
The numbers make sense always.
Yeah, okay. Um, and then number sixty-five.
Director Goodetti. Director, your time.
So council's seen a number of opioid settlements, um, legislation, this is similar to those. This one happens to pertain to claims between Purdue Pharma and the Sandler family. Basically, if you want a chance at participating in the funds, I think there's about six point five billions in, billion dollars in funds that will be made available for this settlement. Along with some non-monetary restrictions that prevent the Sandler family from engaging in opioid sales into the future. But like I said, basically, if you want a shot at getting some money out of the settlement, we got to participate, this legislation authorizes us to do that.
Anyone have any questions? Anyone object to doing one, two, three on that? Okay. That brings us to the end of the ordinances, I just want to mention it real quick, so I don't forget, we do have a motion on here. Director Goodetti, would you like to explain this?
Yeah, did you already discuss the three at senior program?
Yeah.
Did not, no, that's, did not, good call.
So there's an additional three pieces of legislation, the administration's proposing to be added on the agenda. You'd have to waive the forty-eight hour notice rule. The three pieces of legislation are the annual senior program for the ball service department. Snow plow removal, gutter cleaning, and trash subsidy. So you guys should have a copy of those distributed to you, so like I said, you just need a motion to add it to the agenda, waive the forty-eight hour rule, then you can proceed as usual. I don't think there's a whole lot to note, it's the same contractors for trash and for, um, I'm sorry, the same contractors.
Snow.
Gutter cleaning and snow plowing, I think snow plowing increased from eighteen fifty to nineteen dollars a bush. And I remember for, what, whatever, I remember there, but pretty consistent with last year. And then as to your question on the motion, um, that pertains to an ODOT required process for the Highland Road, uh, state routing intersection improvement process. Basically, what ODOT's saying is, the city engineer can't just go out and take the project anymore, we have to follow quality-based selection process. Step one is to get an owner's representative, um, who can then help us with the request for proposals later on, which the engineer could then bid on along with anybody else, and then. Loas invest bid essentially. So this motion would just authorize us to select an owner's representative.
Anyone have any questions about the motion or the three pieces of legislation, which, would you like to assign numbers to those?
Yeah, I already did, so. So sixty-six is snow, and you, and you offering it, Matt, second again. Sixty-seven is the rubbish, and that's Jessica and Benny. Sixty-eight is the gutter, and that is Dave and Jessica.
Who was, who was sixty-six?
Uh, that was Jeff and Matt.
And who's, who's got the motion?
Yeah.
To waive the forty-eight hour?
Oh.
I have the motion for the route eight.
For the route eight? Oh, I was going, okay, good, good call, I was going to ask, does anybody want to volunteer to make the motion? Okay, I'll do it.
I'll second it.
I'll second it.
That's okay. Uh, and Benny, you'll second it? And then I, um, talked to, um, the law director, I, I will make a motion to add all three of those pieces of legislation at once. Somebody, could somebody second that?
I'll second it.
And then, uh, we can just individually deal with them after we add them to the agenda.
And that's after this route eight?
Uh, no, we would add them after sixty-five, right?
Yeah.
Before we do the motion.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are we doing one, two, three on all these?
That's a good question for the room.
Will it for this, this year, yeah?
I think the sooner we get these passed, the sooner they can get people signed up.
Right.
So I think.
The seniors would certainly appreciate it, although it's forward.
So you're, you're going to.
I'll make a motion to add the three items, and then I believe I'm the.
Yeah.
I'm the first person to offer sixty-six.
Okay.
Um, and, uh, Matt, I think you're the second?
I'm the second for you.
For me, yeah, so, so I'll go right from making the motion to adding them to making the first motion for sixty-six, or offering sixty-six.
Can he waive the rule for the forty-eight hours for all three of those?
Yeah, I asked him that ahead of time, to make sure. I, I figured it would be more efficient to do it that way. If anybody objects, we can do three votes on it, but I think it'd be more efficient.
You have no problem with gutter cleaning, right?
Not at all.
Not at all.
Okay, are we good on all those? Then I'd like to go back to forty and give you a floor to, to discuss forty.
All right, um, when we last left off, we had merely changed the, um. Changed the ordinance to add a twenty-foot leash length to, I'm sorry, I'm pulling this up. Uh, the twenty-foot leash length to the ordinance, and then also an exemption for military and police dogs. Thank you, I got it, but thank you. Yeah, so, so what we are doing, just to refresh everyone's memory, um, it used to be that a dog at large was, uh, a, a dog is off the premises of the owner. Now we are requiring all dogs to be off the premise of the owner, um, under control by a leash. And that, uh, there was some issue with some residents that were concerned about the, uh, A two. The unauthorized entry of any dog or cat on the premises of another, regardless of whether or not the dog, cat is under reasonable restraint. The residents were worried that this meant that all of a sudden, if your dog stepped onto someone's yard, uh, while you were walking them on a leash. This would be a violation, you would get, you know, hauled off by the police. I spoke to one resident via email, and I spoke extensively with Mr. Goodetti, he's talked to me about four times about this. I've talked to Chief Yakovovich. Officers have discretion in instances like this. Mr. Ventura and I talked about the fact that it's the same thing with speed limits, you know? You, you know you were not supposed to go over the speed limit, everything's posted, everybody knows. Nobody's pulling you over for going twenty-seven in a twenty-six, or in a twenty-five, just like nobody is going to be arresting you for stepping over onto, uh, a yard when walking your dog. You already, we're not allowed to let your dog walk on other people's property, uh, that's, that's never been the case. That actual wording was almost copied from, so, um, section two C, section C. It was just moved up to this section, so that was, that's why it was kind of brought to light that that was there. So, um, I talked to, like I said, I talked to Chief Yakovovich about it. He seems to be in favor of adding a leash law, giving the officers, uh, the ability to have something more, to help residents that are having problems with dogs in their yard, running loose. People walking their dogs and letting their dogs run ahead of them, even if they feel that they're under control. As dog walker myself, I feel safer whenever all the other dogs around me are on the leashes, to know that they're not going to be coming after my dog. And everybody thinks their dog is the best, and it's not a problem, but it's a huge problem when it is. We have, and as I said, we, you have the right to ask people to not walk their dog on your lawn, whether or not they are on a leash. You don't get calls about that, complaints about people's dogs walking on, on lawns, whether they're on a leash or not.
If some, if a dog's on a leash, we never call them.
Right.
But one thing I would think of, and it's the only thing I can really think of, is let's say you have an invisible fence, and it keeps your dog from getting within four feet of the sideline. And you and your neighbor don't get along, but, so they walk their dog in that little strip, so it brings your dog right to the edge, and they. I can't see this being a problem, but if it becomes a problem, we need a way to say, you can't do this, we warned you, you don't listen, now we got to cite you. It would probably never come to that, but if we don't have something to enforce, you're going to warn them every day, or try to afford escalates between neighbors? I mean, it's just, it's a tool. Citing them or arresting them is one option to enforce the ordinance. Warning most times handles the problem, but if we're warning. But if we're warning somebody and there's no end to what's going on, our next step, if it doesn't exist, we can't solve the problem. That's all I would say.
I had a real serious dog complaint about two weeks ago. Gentleman was riding his bicycle, walking his dog on a rope, about a five-inch, inch thick rope. And two dogs that were not leashed came running at them, and he stopped, get off his bicycle, and protect himself from the other two dogs and his dog with the bicycle. That's completely uncalled for. That's a situation where you might have to step it up a bit. And as the chief is saying, if you don't have something to use, then there's nothing else you can do.
And, you know, council member Darvis had brought up the fact, well, some dogs can walk off-leash and they're perfectly good. And that's true, but if you are healing your dog properly, that means your dog is already within three feet of your hand. It's right there. It is not gonna be a problem for anyone just to attach a leash and have your dog further under control. So, um, you know, the safety of residents is in mind with this, the safety of other dogs. You know, being, people being able to protect their, their properties and not have dogs that are off-leash that are being walked around the neighborhood and then let go. So, um, does anyone else have any questions or comments on this? I'm, I'm ready to go for third read on this.
I reviewed the one complaint that we received, or the opposition, probably worse than a complaint. And I read the law director's response, and I completely agree with Mark's assessment of that. I don't think the proposed alternate legislation was gonna be a good fit. And I think Mark's answer was spot on.
And the chief just brought up the exact same thing. So in that exchange, chief, the law director has said, well, if we don't have the language about the unauthorized entry of any dog on the premise of another, then a person could have a dog on a twenty-foot leash standing in the middle, twenty feet into someone's yard. That's no problem. And it's exactly the same thing that you just said. They could also go four feet into a yard and, and harass, you know, in that instance. Why would they do that, just to harass the other dog?
In most situations, both residents don't care. Unless there's a conflict with children at the house or another pet at the house, we may get those calls. Usually, we can work it out. But if, sometimes there's neighbors that just can't. We have to have an endgame. We have to have a way to say, look, we've tried everything. If this continues, we're gonna cite you. Technically, you're in violation. May never happen, but we need a way to do so.
And regarding the length of the leash, a twenty-foot leash, one resident that I talked to via email did bring up the fact that at the parks, we require an eight, or, or an eight-foot leash. I think, uh, and, and if this passes, I think I'm gonna suggest that we change the park to a twenty-foot leash also. Typically, a retractable leash is sixteen feet. You know, you can have a longer retractable leash. I don't wanna make it eight or twelve. I definitely don't want officers out there having to be like, oh, that's, that's.
That was a tape measure.
So they could, they should be reassured that if someone's on a retractable leash, that's gonna be sixteen, sixteen feet. And then there's such things, there's a training leash, which is not retract, retractable, it's a nylon long leash. Those are typically twenty feet, so I could see someone wanting to take their, their puppy up to, to the, uh, to the park on the training leash, and they can do their recalls with that. So I will be proposing, if this passes, to change, um, the leash law in the park to just twenty feet. Because we already have the leash law in the park, and people are either using leashes or not using leashes. So I would like to, you know, let, you know, let people know that, you know, you could use a longer leash now, you could use a retractable leash in the woods.
Does that limit, I'm sorry, is that limiting the same ordinance, or is that in a different chapter?
It's in a different chapter. It's in the parks.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
So I just wanna kind of put a common sense spin on this. You know how many times when I was on patrol, and I will say there was a former member of council, I would go up to the park in the morning with my routine thing. He is up there with his dog, not on a leash, down on the ball field, he's throwing the ball as far as he can, running some energy out of the dog. It takes off, gets the ball, comes right back, and can't wait for the next throw. I'd say, good morning, how are you? It's not like we even spoke about the dog being off-leash. There's nobody else around in the park, the dog listened. If every single violation, if discretion wasn't a thing, can you imagine my people stopping everybody for doing twenty-six in the twenty-five? We'd be all day long. You couldn't drive cars in this city. Discretion, what, what's working? If it's, there's a baseball game going on, it's like, no, hey, no, you need to put a dog on a leash. You can't just have it running around. It's all common sense, and nobody's gonna, we just wanna make sure that that dog is safe, other animals are safe, people are safe. Depending on the circumstances, they may get asked to put the dog on a leash. It may be okay during that circumstance that at six in the morning, nobody's up there, it's okay. That's all I would say.
Any further discussion or questions on that? All right, thank you for listening to me over three months on this.
Third read.
Third read, please.
All right. I'm sorry you didn't have a chance to talk about it at the last meeting.
You got, you got glitches.
Yeah, yeah. I, for fifty-five, for the recreational vehicle parking, I'm comfortable leaving this at second, but if anybody would like to talk about it while we're talking, we can do that. I'm kind of curious to see if we get any residents that come to talk about it. So I'm not in a hurry to, to move this, but.
I'm, I don't know, I'm, I'm, I'm worried about it. I know that we've had problems on, like, the street where I grew up with people parking their RV in the driveway, you know, it's, it's one long street, five, five houses. You look down the street, if there's an RV in the middle house in the middle of the street, no one can see the other way. It's just, it's just unsightly, um, which is why we have the ordinance. It has to be behind, the, the ordinance as it stands now, it has to be behind that. So I just, I just worry that residents are going to be, not taking advantage of it, because it's their property. They, they wanna do what they want with their, their RV. But plenty of people has done the work to get their RVs behind the house. The one house in, on the street where I grew up, you know, there's a big beautiful garage in the back because of this RV issue. So I, I just worry about, um, people, you know, I, I don't wanna paint them in a bad light, but you know, it's just gonna be easier for people to, from March to October, however we have it, just to let your RV sit in the, in the driveway, just because it's gonna be like that. And I know Chief Yakapovich had said in the last meeting, he kind of poked his head in and said like, hey, we've gotten a handful of calls about something like this. We go over and check to see if someone is, you know, let them know they can't have it parked there. They tell us that they're working on their thing, getting it ready to go out, and that's it. So nobody is really getting cited. Another, it's, you know, another instance of officer discretion. So I do, I really would like to hear from residents about that, because there's gonna be residents that'll be impacted because they're RV owners. There's gonna be residents that are impacted because they wouldn't want something parked on their street like that, or, uh, you know, blocking their view. And then there's also the, you know, you can't hook, uh, water or electricity up to it. Doesn't mean that you can't invite everyone over after the, after the soccer game and have a high school party in the driveway, you know, on, in your RV. So I, I have reservations about it, but I would definitely like to hear, not to give everyone ideas, but I would like to hear from residents about this.
I, I'm, I'm with you on that. I'm not in a hurry to do this. I, if this, if it gets enacted, I wouldn't envision it being meaningful until next spring anyway.
Right.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna hold that at second. Anyone else want to talk about it?
Putting the garbage in the set, pushing. So I think a fifty-five, that one is essentially, you have to refer to the planning commission.
Once we do, what we would do. Once we show, yeah, yeah, I was aware of that. If everybody didn't know that, it's a zoning change, right, Mark? So if, when we decide to send this out from us, it would go to planning, just like the other ordinance?
Well, you, you'll sit, yeah, you'll send it there before you vote it up or down.
Do we want to send it there now, or wait?
I think you had held it from last time to see if you guys were gonna make any more amendments before you send it to planning.
Okay.
But if you feel like this is gonna be what's voted on by you, then it would be a good time to refer it now.
Can we wait one meeting to see if anybody comes to talk about it tonight? Oh, we'll hold it, does, does it matter if we hold it at first or second? Let's just hold it at first, you don't even have to read it. That work?
So we're holding fifty-five and we're holding fifty-six. And fifty-one? Good.
Well. I think that's everything we had to talk about. We have ten minutes to spare. Did you want to talk about your ordinance at all?
Um, no, there's been quite a bit of time spent on this also, along with the police chief and the law director. And I, I think we still need to take and kind of go over a little bit more and make sure all our ducks in a row before we move it forward.
We adjourn so we can turn off the cameras and eat some snacks?
I could eat that whole container.
I know, just in case.
Evening and welcome to the September 11th Macedonia City Council Meeting. It is 7:30 PM. Mr. Hoover, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Brandt.
Here.
Mr. Ferraro.
Here.
Mr. Finley.
Here.
Mr. Garvis.
Here.
Mr. Ventura.
Here.
Now I ask Mr. O'Brien to lead us in the invocation. If you'd all please stand.
As we gather here this evening, we do so with a shared commitment to serve our community with wisdom, integrity, and compassion. May we be guided by a spirit of unity and purpose, seeking solutions that uplift every resident and strengthen the bonds that connect us. Let our discussions be filled with respect and understanding, knowing that our decisions shape the future of our city and the well-being of those who call it home. May we approach our responsibilities with open minds and open hearts, setting aside personal differences to work for the common good. May our choices reflect fairness, justice, and a deep sense of responsibility to those we represent. Let us, in this meeting, be productive, our conversations be meaningful, and our actions bring positive change. And now, our Honorable Mayor Nick Polnarek will lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Chapel O'Brien. We appreciate it. Okay, first up is approval of minutes.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the Thursday, August 14th regular council meeting.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public comments? We have none this evening. Correspondents from the clerk.
Yes, I have one letter that was to Chief Brian Ripley. It says, "Today at approximately 4:30 this afternoon, we had an explosion and huge fire from an amount of trash that was dumped from a Kimball trash truck on Willow Lane in the Woodland Point Development. I was about to call 911 for assistance when the fire truck arrived. Immediately, the firemen started battling the fire. My husband and I are still very grateful for the efficiency of our fire department. We are so fortunate that we live in this community where the fire department is available to protect us from fires. Please acknowledge these fine firemen and let them know that they are truly appreciated." And that was on August 20th. From Harry and Susan Klein, 77th through to Willow Lane.
Thank you. Moving into pending your new legislation, starting with Ordinance 40.
I'd like to offer Ordinance 40 for 2025 for its third reading by title only.
Second.
An ordinance amending Section 505.01 of the codified ordinances of the city of Macedonia relative to dogs and cats running at large.
I will open the floor to discussion on this.
Ordinance 40 is at face value and at deeper value merely a leash law. Our city is big enough and dense enough that dogs should be on leashes when walking in neighborhoods. It's for the safety of your dog. It's for the safety of other dogs in the neighborhood. It's for the protection of residents' property. So if this passes, we'll require residents to walk their dog with a 20-foot leash or shorter. Most retractable leashes are 16 feet, so you should be pretty good. There was some concern about the clause in the ordinance that was moved from a different part of the ordinance that does not allow you to let your dog run or go on other people's property. I've spoken extensively with a lawyer about this. The lawyer is absolutely sick about talking about this, sick of talking about this, but you will not be arrested if your dog puts one paw on your neighbor's lawn. You will not be arrested if your dog is like my dog and rolls in the yard, in the snow, in the grass, in the leaves. There will not be police officers patrolling the streets looking for people who have their dogs off-leash or have their dogs walking off the sidewalk into neighbors' yards. Everyone understands that dogs generally go into yards when they're walking. This basically, it's just a way to keep dogs under constraint. You know, if you are walking your dog off-leash and they trail away from you and get up into someone's yard, even if you can call them back and do, that is not going to be appreciated. So this is to bring us up to par with other cities of our size and require residents to walk their dogs on a leash. What's going to keep this from being, you know, apocalyptic hellscape of everyone just getting pulled over for their dogs walking in the street is going to be officer discretion. And I'm going to call on Chief Yakupovich to give us a little bit of information on officer discretion and what we can't do. One example that we've brought up in the past is the speed limit law. Do you know what the speed limit is? It's clearly posted. You are not going to get pulled over for reasonably going a couple miles an hour over the speed limit. So that is when an officer has discretion. So Yak, Chief Yakupovich, can you add anything to that?
Sure. So as we talked about in the work session, a citation or an arrest is only one means to enforce an ordinance, so to speak. If, we talked about, if a dog is walking and it's, you know, sniffing around in the grass, running around like dogs do, unless it's a problem, nobody's going to be bothered by that. If there's a specific issue, let's say there's a dog in that yard that is on an invisible fence that's four feet off the property line before the sidewalk, and neighbors don't get along, one neighbor walks their dog specifically, allows it in that four-foot strip between the sidewalk and the invisible fence to taunt the dog, it may escalate. In that case, we would tell them, hey, you need to stop doing that. Please don't cause a problem. But in order to ultimately solve the problem, we would need an ordinance of this type to say, listen, we've talked to these people. Nothing's working. Technically, you are violating the law. If you continue, we're going to cite you. Officer discretion is a big part of our job. Most times, a conversation or a warning will solve the problem and it doesn't repeat. Speed limit, great example. As I mentioned in the work session, if my officers were ticketing or stopping people for 26 mile an hour in a 25 mile an hour zone, we wouldn't get from one end of this city to the other in a full shift. I mean, we'd be stopping every car that passes us. Discretion. Common sense, if we have a problem, we work out the problem. If we can't work it out, ultimately, people can't agree to comply, it may require a citation. It's options. It gives us options. We need this.
And that's the key. Residents have brought up the fact that they don't like the idea of us passing ordinance that just don't plan to be enforced. They do plan to be enforced if needed, after officer discretion, after the people that are actually there on the street doing their jobs. So it's, like Chief said, I think this is needed just to help the police department and to help neighbors be better neighbors. So with that, I move that Ordinance Number 40, 2025, be passed into law and posted.
Second. I'm going to do a roll call on this one, please.
Mr. Brandt.
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro.
Yes.
Mr. Finley.
No.
Mr. Garvis.
Yes.
Mr. Ventura.
Yes.
Ordinance 40 carries. Ordinance Number 51.
We're pulling on that one?
I'm sorry. I apologize. Ordinance 53.
All right, I move to offer Ordinance Number 53, 2025, for its second reading by title only.
Emergency ordinance declaring improvements to certain parcels of real property to be a public purpose, describing the public improvements to be made which directly benefit such parcels, requiring the owners of the improvements on such parcels to make service payments in lieu of taxes, establishing a NCR municipal public improvement tax increment equivalent fund for the deposit of such service payments pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Sections 57.09.40, 5709.42, and 509.43.
So this is the TIF for Divinity Landing. It's the property that is next to the bowling alley off of Route 8. I want to be very clear because it's a perfect opportunity for me to talk about this. This is not a senior living. This is not a budget living. It's none of the things that people are saying out there. This is a 55 and over facility. It's where you can go and live if you're age 55 or older. It's not budget living. It's not if you're rich, it's not if you're poor. It's none of that. It's all the rumors that are floating out there that this is like a Section 8 or something where it's for people in desperate need. That's not what it is. I want to be very clear. What it actually is, it's 55 and over. It's pretty simple. It's not what everyone's saying it is. So I wanted to make sure that I was clear about that. If anyone has questions about that, call my office. I'd be more than happy to give a greater explanation on that.
Okay, moving on to Resolution Number 57.
I move to offer Resolution Number 57, 2025, for all three readings by title only.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Emergency resolution authorizing the trade-in of a 2017 Ford Fusion Police Department vehicle to the Serpentine of North Olmsted without the necessity of advertisement and formal bidding.
Chief, do you want to speak to this, please?
So this is going to be, we're planning capital for next year to add another vehicle to the fleet, move some vehicles around the fleet to make another SRO car, a vehicle dedicated full-time for the SRO. We started looking at those based now because based on the issues we've had in the past, ordering cars can take three years. We knew. I think those current issues have resolved, but Lieutenant Costello found the vehicle, a Dodge Durango, which we typically pay 48,000 for. And with some incentives I am going now and some trade bonus that the dealership was offering, we were able to, they were willing to give us this vehicle, sell us this vehicle by 48,000. So with the Fusion, it's in the games of the years and winter, not really conducive to what we're working with. We'll hold off on updating the car until next year's capital budget comes in, but if we can make this happen, take the warranty off the road card, that'd be great. We're going to save $20,000.
Thank you. Any further discussion? And what is your pleasure?
I move to adopt Resolution Number 57, 2025, and post the same according to law.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance 57 carries. Thank you to Lieutenant Costello and his work on that, saving the city $20,000. Definitely appreciate that. Resolution 58.
I move to offer Resolution Number 58, 2025, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolution in support of the mayor entering into the 2025-2026 version of the Intergovernmental Memorandum of Understanding for Job Creation and Retention and Tax Revenue Sharing with Summit County and other participating communities.
So this is essentially an anti-poaching within Summit County. So let's just say there's a business in Twinsburg and I want them to come to Macedonia. It gives the right for them to get dollars back if I try to poach them from them. The threshold for that used to be a payroll of 3.5 million. It's jumping to 4.5 million. The reason we stay in this is the OPWC funding, Ohio Public Works Commission. The scoring that we get to get those essential free dollars for roadwork, that affects that score. So we want to stay into that, that program, so we can get that scoring. And obviously, I'm not going to poach from one of our neighbors. It's not something that I would ever do, but it disallows that. And if you do do that, there's consequence to that. So that's essentially what the ordinance is saying. Have I missed anything, Mr. Law Director?
Nope.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. What is your pleasure?
I move to adopt Resolution Number 58, 2025, and post the same according to law.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Resolution 58 carries. Resolution 59.
Move to offer Resolution 59, 2025, for its first, second, and third readings by title only.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the county budget commission, authorizing the necessary tax levies, and certifying the same to the Summit County, Ohio fiscal offices.
So this is just housekeeping. It's the certification of our tax rate, something we do every year, pretty innocuous in the grand scheme. Any further discussion? Hearing none. What is your pleasure?
I move that we pass Resolution 59 and post the same according to law.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Resolution 59 carries. Ordinance Number 60.
I'd like to offer Ordinance 60, 2025, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance authorizing the purchase of a Case 621G XR wheel loader from Southeastern Equipment Company through the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Program for use by the Service Department.
Director Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, this is to your place of support. It's a wheel loader, which is a piece of equipment that's predominantly used to load salt. The current one is 10 years old. This is part of the capital approval plan and the money that has been incurred. It's purchased through Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Program, so there's no need for bidding. That's about it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. What is your pleasure?
I'd like to move that we pass and post according to law, Ordinance 60, 2025.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance 60 carries. Ordinance Number 61.
I offer Ordinance Number 61, 2025, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance authorizing the purchase of a Titan Pro Plus leaf vacuum loader and two Spartan-style leaf containment bodies from McQueen through the Houston-Gallston Area Council Cooperative Purchasing Program for use by the Service Department.
Director Wilson.
Thank you again. Yeah, this is a Titan Pro Plus leaf machine with two boxes for the roll-off trucks, also purchased through a cooperative purchasing program. And this will round out and be the final replacement for all of our leaf machines that were extremely old and in need of replacement.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. What is your pleasure?
I offer Ordinance Number 61, 2025, and move to adopt it and post the same according to law.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance 61 carries. Ordinance Number 62.
I move to offer Ordinance Number 62, 2025, for all three readings by title only.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into a contract with Grayline Inc. for the storm sewer replacement at 371 East Aurora Road in the city of Macedonia.
Director Gilati.
Yes, so this project is to replace an old rusted storm sewer pipe that runs in the tree lawn in front of the Aldi grocery store. And the project is funded entirely by NE RSD funds.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. What is your pleasure?
I move to adopt Ordinance Number 62, 2025, and post the same according to law.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance 62 carries. Ordinance Number 63.
Yes, Mayor, I offer Ordinance Number 63, 2025, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance amending Ordinance Number 74, 2024, relative to current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Macedonia for the period of January 1st, 2025 to December 31st, 2025.
Director Vares.
Thank you, Mayor. As discussed in caucus, this is our first amendment to our appropriations this year, also making some changes to our estimated resources. Happy to let everyone know that we were able to increase our estimate for income tax and the main addition to appropriations is a few hires in the police and fire departments.
Thank you. I'll make sure the people at home can hear you, too.
Okay. That's it.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. What is your pleasure?
I offer Ordinance Number 63, 2025, and adopted, have it adopted, and post the same according to law.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Ordinance Number 64.
Mayor, I'd like to offer Ordinance 64, 2025, for its first reading by title only.
An ordinance amending Section 351.19 of the codified ordinances of the city of Macedonia relative to recreational vehicle parking in residential districts.
Mr. Ventura, do you want to speak to this?
No.
The next one. I'm sorry. Okay, disregard.
This is one that we'll need to talk about in the future if and when we pass a previously motioned ordinance.
Gotcha. My apologies. Resolution 65.
Mayor, I offer Resolution 65, 2025, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed?
An emergency resolution authorizing the mayor to approve a national opioid litigation settlement, including Purdue Pharma LP and the Saquon family.
Director Gadda.
So the title basically says the effect of this legislation would be to allow just paid in this bankruptcy settlement that's currently pending in federal bankruptcy for New York between Purdue Pharma and the Saquon family. So we don't know the exact amount that we'll get. If we do decide to just pay, that'll be decided at a later time. The facility's got our approval process.
Thank you. Further discussion? Hearing none. What is your pleasure?
I move that we pass Resolution 65, 2025, and post the same according to law.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution 65 carries.
I would like to make a motion to waive the 48-hour rule and add ordinances 66, 67, and 68-2025 to the agenda.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And I would also like to offer Ordinance 66, 2025, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance providing for a senior snow removal program for the 2025-2026 winter season.
Fairly self-explanatory. Anyone want to add anything? What is your pleasure?
I'd like to move that we pass and post according to law, Ordinance 66, 2025. I'd like to move that we pass and post according to law, Ordinance Sixty-six, Twenty-Twenty-Five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance Sixty-six carries. Ordinance Number Sixty-seven.
Mayor, I'd like to offer Ordinance Sixty-seven, Twenty-Twenty-Five, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance providing for and authorizing refuse collection subsidy for senior citizens and making appropriation for that subsidy.
And what is your pleasure?
I move that we pass and post Ordinance Sixty-seven, Twenty-Twenty-Five, according to law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance Sixty-seven carries. Ordinance Number Sixty-eight.
I move to offer Ordinance Number Sixty-eight, Twenty-Twenty-Five, for all three readings by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Value Property Maintenance LLC for a senior gutting cleaning program for the Twenty-Twenty-Five fall season and appropriating funds for the summer.
And what is your pleasure?
I move to adopt Ordinance Number Sixty-eight, Twenty-Twenty-Five, and post the same according to law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance Sixty-eight carries.
How many people sign up for this, Mayor? For these programs?
Call the Finance Department if you're, is it sixty-five and over, Director Vares?
Yeah, sixty-five and over.
I believe is the threshold.
Or have a disability with a doctorate of verification.
And there's an income. It's income-based.
If you're under a certain income threshold to qualify, if you have any question about that, you look it up online or contact the Finance Department, they'd be happy to help you.
Okay, also, Mayor, this is something that we've been doing for quite a few years
to help our seniors in the city and our disabled.
I think even back when I was on council for years, that this has been in place, so, yeah.
It's a great program.
It is.
And thanks, thank you to council for keeping it going.
Yes, thank you. Any other motions or legislative actions?
Yes, I would like to make a motion authorizing the mayor to accept the proposal from Stephen Havansek and Associates Incorporated to act as the city's representative in the quality-based selection process for the Highland Road, State Route Eight intersection improvement project known as SUM Highland Road PID one-two-one zero-six-seven.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I don't know how you do that, Mr. Hoover.
All right, next on the agenda is the mayor's report. Obviously, today's September eleventh. I want to pay tribute to those that lost their lives on that day, and it was just a terrible thing. We had a little thing out front here in front of City Hall today. If those of you that don't know that are watching, we have a beam from the site of nine-eleven. It was really special to me that we have that there, and I can't thank our former chief, Black, enough for procuring that and getting that here. I think it's a really nice tribute to those that unfortunately lost their lives on that day. But we had Father Jeffrey from St. Barnas come say a nice prayer. The employees that were wanted to come out and be a part of that did, and I want to thank all those folks that did that because, again, it's a very nice thing that we pay that tribute to those folks on that tragic day. I think back at my life of things that are profound and, you know, like, I don't want to focus on bad days, but that's one of them that will always stick in my mind. And then, obviously, the Iraq war before that, I remember being a young man with my dad going, "There's bombs in the air, Dad, what's going on?" And of course, nine-eleven happened, so. I guess a generational thing, but nonetheless, want to pay my tribute to those folks that lost their lives. I also want to point out that our issue number has been labeled as number thirty-eight for our levy renewal with no increase. I'm going to point this out probably every time I talk about it because I think it's important to point this out, but in Cleveland Magazine, the city of Macedonia is in the top fifteenth for lowest taxes in northeast Ohio. Not Summit County, not Kiyoka County, not Portis County, in northeast Ohio. We've done a really good job of keeping our property taxes very, very low, and this is a testament to that. I mean, we're ranked in here with a lot of nice, prominent communities, and I'm proud to say that we're keeping that low. Those dollars in this renewal are very critical to this community. That goes for police, fire, and some service folks that fund that staff. We have to have this go through. If anyone has questions about that, they can contact the City Hall. I'd be happy to talk more about that, but I want to be very clear in that this is a renewal. We've had this on the books since the sixties, and this is nothing new. We're not increasing it. I will not be asking for anything more at this point. So, I would urge anyone that has questions to call, and we'll discuss that a little further. The service building is surging forward. We had nineteen different groups of people throw their name in the hat for constructions of the facility. The shortlist was down to four. We've met with those four to ask us questions. On the twenty-fifth, we'll meet with them again for our questions to them, get a better idea of what the numbers are looking like from their perspective, and that thing will be moving forward as well very quickly. So, I anticipate seeing groundbreaking this year, in two thousand twenty-five, before the end of the year. So, more to come on that, very excited for that project. I know our service team saw some of those folks today. They're in great anticipation of a building that's conducive to the operation, that will improve their efficiency, and that's what's most important. So, working on it, we're going to get there, and I'm looking forward to the future on that. I brought up the Divinity Landing project, and I'm going to touch on another one because I think it's important because I see chatter out there about it. The Holiday Inn Hotel is being constructed. It's over there by Girl Scout Way. If you are within our zoning restrictions, you can build something in Macedonia or anything in our country. I will not necessarily say that I like every project that comes forward, and Divinity Landing was a project that I wasn't very fond of. They followed all the things that they had to do through our zoning, and they got it done. It's no different with the Holiday Inn that's coming in. We've had our fair share of problems with hotels. It's no secret that the Key Inn, I had battled that battle for a long time. They are now shut down. That doesn't just happen by chance. I mean, there's a lot of things that went on there that were very bad, we recognize that, but we have to follow the letter of the law. I recognize that that building's still standing. It's kind of tied up in legal proceedings at this point, and there's not a whole lot I can do, but I can assure this community that we are on top of it. Our police patrol that area all the time. I'm aware that the doors are open, I'm aware that the windows are open, and don't think that it's not a topic of conversation that the chief, the law director, and I talk about endlessly. It drives me absolutely bonkers that that thing's sitting there like that, but we have to follow the letter of the law. I'm not going to put the city at risk for that hotel. But at this point, it is shut down, and that's where it stands. And that's what's most important for us and everyone in and around that building. So, if you see something over there, call us, call the police department. We want to know immediately. I mean, we don't, we can't, we're not ubiquitous, we can't be there all the time. So, let us know immediately. With that, please drive carefully, put the phones down, drive the car. Moving on to committee reports.
Parks and Rec Commission had our August meeting, August sixteenth, I think it was. It was our first meeting with the new director, Eckendorf. It was great, good to know what Mr. Eckendorf had been able to accomplish and get together in a short time. The Parks and Rec Commission was able to share some history, ask some questions, maybe fill in a little bit of knowledge gap that may be due to the new staff coming on. It went really smoothly, it was great, and we really appreciate everything that you did to get that meeting together. So, we look forward to working with you. That being said, we had in the recent past decided that we were going to do quarterly meetings. Now, with the new staff coming on, we think maybe our, you know, we might be a little more useful if we had more meetings. So, we're all going to reconvene at the planned time in October for the October meeting, which I do believe is October twentieth. And at that time, we'll decide if we need a November meeting, we won't be having a December meeting. And then, we'll come up with a schedule for twenty-twenty-six to see how that goes. So, if anyone is interested in participating or coming to a Parks and Rec Commission meeting, which are all open, that'll be Wednesday, October twentieth, upstairs at the Rec Center. That's all.
Thank you.
Yes, we had a first of three finance committee meetings today. We covered the Twenty-Twenty-six capital for each department and the Twenty-Twenty-six debt anticipation. On September twenty-fifth, two weeks from today, we will have our second meeting, go over the Twenty-Twenty-six operating budget, and that is also an open meeting. The time will be one-half hour before the work session, so that's to be determined.
Thank you. Okay, department reports. Director Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank council for your approval, your support of the Service Department in our purchases this evening and for squeezing in a few pieces of legislation there. Last second. Laura's been out, and she's been sorely missed. Also, I'd like to welcome a couple of new employees that we do have in the Service Department. Alex Twalski comes from the landscaping world, and Seth Zastaville. He drove a straight truck, the Librae Event Supplies. Both are great additions to our department, and we're excited. Like the mayor talked about, spent a lot of time dealing with the service center meetings. I mean, it's a grueling process, Joe and I and the mayor were through it, but it's been well worth it and really excited about that. Finally, the elevator project, appreciate everyone's patience, but really, they've done a great job. It's moving along really well. Still talking about it, should be done before the eighteenth. Hopefully, you know, maybe even a few days before then, but they really have made a great headway. It's going to be a good thing, and we really need the updates, so that's all. End of report.
Thank you. Director Gilati.
Yes, some updates on some things going on around town. Highland Valley View intersection, work had been taking place earlier this year. At this point, ODOT has taken over and managing the project, so their contractors are scheduled to begin work on September fifteenth. They're going to work until mid-October, and then they're going to suspend for the winter and restart in the spring. So, you'll see them out there soon. Probably saw the postings online for that as well. Summit County is installing a fiber optic line through the city. You may have noticed them on Route eighty-two today. They're also working on Firestone. That project is technically called Summit Connects. So, if any questions come in for that, we'll direct those over to Summit County. Longwood Park Trail, work started earlier this week. Pete and I have been coordinating on that, so that's going. Jessica, I know you're excited about that one. And lastly, Ledge Road paving, paving took place today between North Bedford and the Railroad Bridge. They wrapped up here at the end of the day, so another nice new road out there for our community. End of report.
Thank you. Director Eckendorf.
Thank you, Mayor. We're excited to have two projects going on. The first one is the Longwood Park Trail, paved trail. As Joe said, got kicked off officially this week with moving the equipment in. They'll start digging the actual trail itself around the park starting next week, so hoping that the weather cooperates and we can move quickly through that project. At the same time, inside the building at the Rec Center, we have two projects going on at the same time. The family locker room renovation project on the first floor and the administrative office project on the second floor. So, expect to see some construction walls up. It'll be a little noisy here for about a week or so, and then, you know, continuing through possibly the next month or so. But after that, things should return to pretty normal operating. The other thing with Parks and Rec, we've got Fall Fest coming up, September twenty-seventh at Longwood Park. That's four-thirty to nine-thirty. As mentioned before, we have moved the fireworks that were planned from the summer event to this event, so we're excited to have those to offer. Couple important notes here. This event is only for Nordonia school district residents, district employees, and MACRec members. And most importantly, anyone under the age of eighteen must be accompanied by a parent or guardian. And also, just to clarify, the next Parks and Rec Committee meeting is October fifteenth.
All right, thank you very much.
No problem. End of report.
Thank you. Director Vares.
Thank you, Mayor. Believe It or Not, Chief Ripley. Where is that? Ripley's Believe It or Not. We are still processing Macedonia resident refunds, actually approved a number of them today for payment. So, if you have a extension with Rita, we will honor that and process your refund. End of report.
End of report?
End of report, I said.
Felt like you have more to say.
Believe it or not, I don't.
How weird. Director Collins.
Thanks, Mayor. Major projects include some additional storage infrastructure and backup infrastructure and working on replacing the phone systems. Thank you. End of report.
Thank you. Assistant Commissioner Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, as well, no, the Holiday Inn Express has started breaking ground, so we've been out there already on site, you know, coordinating different things. We're going to be keeping a close eye on everything there during every phase of construction right down to the inn. Also, the National Church Residence over in Valley View has started. It's, they got the foundations in already, the elevator shaft is about completed. They're looking about pouring concrete in about a few weeks, and then they're going to start framing that project. And of course, we all under about the Valley Reserve subdivision. Everybody's been seeing that going up, and it's moving right along. I think they started on the underground utilities, and they'll be doing that till about the end of November. And then, last is the sidewalk program. And basically, they've completed Area C, which is around Firestone Lane and Lawton and all that area there, and they're starting and moving into Brookshire, Brook Point, and then Long Brook area there, which has happened to be D, but there's about eight different areas that they have to work in, so that's it.
I'll also add to the Building Department report. Knights Inn is another one that I hear a lot about. They have approached us, they are going to knock down one of the buildings where you build a brand-new facility, a new hotel, and when that's complete, they're going to knock down the other one. So, it's another area that I've had focus on, and we've worked with them to rectify some of the issues that were flowing through there. So, I think that's coming in the forthcoming year, and looking forward to that project getting completed as well. So, good stuff. Director Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. The city's annual employee health fair is September eighteenth in the basement of City Hall from seven to ten a.m. We have twenty-one vendors and looking forward to a good turnout. Thank you. End of report.
And thank you for all the work you put into that. I don't know if people really realize how much work and effort you put into that, so.
My girls do a great job.
Your team and you do a wonderful job.
My girls do an amazing job, and they've worked really hard, so I'm looking forward to it. We have more vendors this year than we have had in the past, and different vendors, so we'll see.
Everyone's going to get a head start on their health by taking the stairs.
That's right.
The elevators.
I'm worried about how the vendors are getting down there now, but, you know, we'll figure it out.
Everyone has to take a bin.
And to be clear, that's for city employees. I would encourage council, if you can make it to that, you should probably go check that out.
Absolutely.
It's worthwhile.
Everyone can take part in the going around and talking to vendors, in the raffle and that type of thing. You just can't do the biometrics or the flu shot unless you are in our health plan.
Can you send them an email with all that?
They have.
We have.
At least twice.
What's the date?
I'm sorry?
You just said the date.
Eighteenth?
Eighteenth, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep, and we've sent two or three blasts, so we'll probably send one more before the eighteenth. Yep, we've sent two or three blasts, so we'll probably send one more before the eighteen.
I was speaking on behalf of President Gravis, was trying to help him out.
I know he's an electronic guy, that's why I figured you'd get help.
An email. Chief Ripley.
Thank you, Mayor. To elaborate on what you spoke of, nine eleven, three hundred and forty-three firefighters, most of them coming off shift that day and never made it home, some of them never recovered. And a group that gets forgotten about frequently is there has been many more of many occupations to this, to this day are suffering from the ill effects of serving for weeks and if not months on that site, attempting to recover those lost firefighters and police officers. It was certainly a day to steal from FDR that will live in infamy in my mind, and it's something that we cherish within the fire service to always remember those three hundred and forty-three people. So, that's going to be the end of my report, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief Djakapovich.
Thank you, Mayor. So, one of our contract dispatchers has agreed to come on full-time, Adam Hagedis, will be starting with us September twentieth. We're excited to have him coming aboard. Also, Mr. Gilati mentioned the Summit Connects program, the eighty-two construction. I would just like to ask the visitors to the city center to be just a little cautious if they're using the Route eighty-two exit to get out. There may be some situations where the one-lane closure there may cause a little bit of a problem seeing traffic oncoming. They'll have a flagger there, but I'm just asking everyone to be patient and pay attention. End of report.
Thank you. Director Gaddi.
Just a quick note on officer discretion generally. I mean, I know we spoke about it earlier in the context of the dog leash ordinance, but it's not just officer discretion blindly. It's based on their experience, their training, and most notably, what's going to be an effective way to enforce that ordinance, as the chief said, not just cutting off the sensation, but maybe talking to the individuals with the ultimate goal of enforcing the intent of the ordinance, and here it's to prevent harm. So, just a quick note on that.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Unfinished business. New business.
Mayor, I'd like to take a, a moment to acknowledge a friend of mine and a friend of the city who recently passed away, a young lady named Melissa Hunter. Some in the city may remember her as Melissa Grekey. She moved to the city in two thousand sixteen with her two young children, lived up on Laurel. By the beginning of two thousand seventeen, we had already tried and failed to pass a levy. I was part of the group, not on council yet, trying to get another levy passed, and Melissa jumped in. She, she did it. She came in and didn't say, who's going to do this? She said, I'm going to do this, and who's coming along? At that time, she was only, you know, in her thirties, younger than me, younger than anyone else that was helping. She coordinated it. We got that levy passed. In two thousand seventeen, we did have some issues also with our city council. Some of the people on council weren't always being truthful, they were being obstinate. Melissa was not afraid. She spoke the truth. She wanted everyone to know what could be done, what we could do to have a great city. She wanted the city great for not only her family, but everyone. She helped me get on council. She helped Mr. Ventura get on council. She helped us change the face of council. One time that's on council, we had another levy to pass, just to get things right. Melissa didn't stop, you know, she was renovating her bathroom, she started a business, she helped us pass another levy. I don't know how much residents understand how much those two levies really put us where we are today as a city, and I thank the residents for passing those levies, but Melissa was such a big part of getting those passed and making our city great. In two thousand twenty-one, Melissa's family grew. She had gotten married by the mayor, had initiated her wedding ceremony. They had gotten married, they had their third child, Bryce, so she called me up and let me know that she was moving to Sagamore. Now that she had another baby and two kids in school, she, I forgot to also mention, when she was here in the city, after she passed those levies, she, she asked, what can I do? What can I do to help? She came in and, before the days of our huge, our, our huge light stuff that we had in the park, we had humble decorations here at City Hall. Her and her kids just came and started putting up decorations with the service department. She really did all the things. She moved to Sagamore in two thousand twenty-one, put all of her heart and soul into helping pass the school levies. She put the same energy into it. She wanted everyone to know the facts. She wanted everyone to know what we could have. She was resilient. She, she got things done she said she was going to do, and she was an amazing, amazing mom, an amazing friend, and she was really great for the city, and I will never forget her. And September is suicide awareness month. We lost Melissa to suicide. But I want everyone to know how great she was, and I want her memory to live on in Macedonia, and I promise to, as long as I'm on this council, to keep dead alive for her. So, thank you for listening to me about Melissa. She was a very important person, and please don't forget her. And if you need help, please call nine-eight-eight for suicide awareness. We can help you. And, that's it.
If I can add to that, I, I did have the pleasure of knowing Melissa. She was a, a fireplug and a very loud voice that, you know, drove a lot of good things. Just, I don't, I don't think people realize how much of an impact she did have on this community because what, what Jessica referred to, I mean, when we passed those levies, that changed the face of this community forever. I mean, we were in a hole, a deep, dark hole financially, and with a lot of turmoil on this council. I look out in the crowd today, I see one person sitting there, thank you for coming, I appreciate you, I know you, I think you're great. You've done a lot with us, too. But it changed the face of this community, and one thing that I vowed, and with the council that's sitting next to me vowed, we're not going to do that crap anymore. We're not going to sit up here and, and kick, fight, and scream. We can disagree. We can, we can say that we don't agree with your position. You can have Republicans, Democrats, or other here, but I think you see this as a one unit that, you know, we're moving this community forward. We're not going to be in the middle of the news, we're not doing that stuff anymore. And, and again, Melissa was a part of that, and I also want to point out, you know, yesterday was a tough day. I, I, whether or not you are Republican, Democrat, you know, the, the young man that lost his life and then the, the school shooting, and I thought back to the, the elected officials that were, were killed in their home, I hope that this community recognizes that that stuff is terrible, and I, and I saw a lot of comments on social media because I couldn't resist looking at it, and if you support someone taking someone else's life, you are a vile, disgusting person, and I hope you look deep within yourself to not think that way. That is just reprehensible and disgusting, and I, and I unfortunately, I know there were some people that didn't like Melissa, and I saw some of the comments on Facebook, and I got to tell you, y'all need to look deep within your hearts where you stand in life because that is vile, and I want everyone to just think about that. I have no intention of going higher in government. I think we need to do something in this world. It, it's terrible, the things that are going on. If, again, if you're Republican or Democrat, I, I don't really care. You, you can talk and have a civil conversation. You don't have to be so angry and evil and, and take it to Facebook and, and take someone's life for God's sake. It's disgusting. It's got to stop. I normally don't do this, but yesterday affected me. I, I don't know why, it really hit home, so think about that. Any other new business? Do you have a motion to adjourn?
Mayor, I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.